Today, Tuesday, March 28th. Enter into closed session under NCGS 143 dot 318 dot 11A3. Consult with legal counsel concerning parcel 07060069 and NCGS 143 dot 318 dot 11A5 regarding potential real estate acquisition. Okay, can I get a motion to go into closed session?
Motion to enter into closed session.
All in favor? Okay, unanimous, so, let's go. Need to return to open session, can I get someone to give me a motion to close, close session?
Motion to close, closed session.
All in favor? Unanimous? Okay, recommend, uh...
Motion to adjourn special meeting.
Okay, unanimous, okay, very good, thank you. I appreciate everybody being here tonight. Beautiful night, and if you would, let's all get up and say the... Pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. We'll all remain standing for a moment of silence, but I'd like to say before the moment of silence, and somebody might want to remember you in your prayers, is we had two people in town that, two residents that meant a lot to our town, pass away recently. Former council member Wayne Smith passed away on, on March the 19th, and he was a council person here in the 90s. I don't remember Wayne personally, but anyway, I understand, I heard a lot of good stories about him, and he was a pioneer for Indian Trail, so, very nice. And then, we had another resident, Odell Rogers, passed away, excuse me, on March 20th. He was considered the keeper of the Indian Trail Cemetery for many, many years. He knew more about the history of the cemetery than anyone else. He was an instrumental part of the town's Centennial Committee. His family donated the land to Edna Love Park, and it's named after his mother, and that's Indian Trail Athletic Association, and that's been there for years. So, please think of them when you're in your moment of silence. Got events coming up in the town, let's see what I got here, got three events, need to find them. I do have them, Donatrina? You gave them to me, because I saw them. Disappeared. They gotta be right here somewhere. Oh, here they are, I got them. Okay, upcoming event, Saturday, April 1st, Hop to It. This event will feature photos with the Easter Bunny, games, crafts, prizes, and more. Egg hunts will be divided up into different age groups. The first hour will be an exclusive hunt for those with differing abilities, featuring beeping eggs, magnetic eggs, and elevated eggs, and more. So, looking forward to that. On Thursday, 4/20, you have another Hits After 6, Tell Me Lies Fleetwood Mac Tribute Band, come out and enjoy a favorite, a free concert, bounce house, face painting, yard games, beer, and food trucks, and the food trucks are good. On the 22nd of April, Union County's Got Talent, now this ought to be fun. Do you have talent, and do you want, do you want to show it? ITP, is this Porter Ridge is teaming up with Lanta Performing Arts, so that be sure to display your talent at Union County's Got Talent. Dazzle the judges with your live onstage performance in hopes to win the title and bragging rights. So, do we have any talented people in here tonight? We got anybody that sings or dances? Mike's a great dancer, he'll, Mike, you enter in it at all? Okay, all right, that brings us to additions and deletions. Do I have any additions or deletions?
I have one addition, Mr. Mayor, on your behalf. I'd like to add item 11A, which is a senior center, community center.
Okay, all right. 11A.
11A as in apple.
11A, okay, all in favor of adding that to the agenda?
What is it?
It's a seniors, talking about a senior senate.
Yeah, okay.
All in favor? All right, unanimous. Okay, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda as amended.
All in favor? Unanimous. That brings us to presentations, and the present person's not here, I do not think. Is it Mimic Tattoo, anybody here? No, well, all right, we'll skip that, and we'll go right over to public comments. Acknowledge public comments rules by addressing council. You acknowledge you have read the town's public comment rules and will abide by them. So, first on the topic tonight, or first on the board, is Michael Falkenberry.
Good evening, Michael Falkenberry, live at Picaserco. Have a few topics here. The first one is your public comments policy. One thing you didn't address is people who are afraid to speak in public. What will you do for them? In high school and college, I witnessed classmates who would rather take a failing grade than to stand up here in front of somebody to do a presentation. So, keep that in mind. Also, the fire trucks. You purchased three. Station 51's will be online within a, what, year, I believe? Year and a half? You should have gotten four, to be fair. Station 51 will service Indian Trail as well. Also, the complete street that was mentioned during the budget workshop, $14 million. You're going to accomplish renovating two city blocks, all you're going to do, 14 million. Eight years ago, during the Economic Development Advisory Committee, public comments, I suggested having Chester Parkway be your new downtown. A blank canvas. Do what as you want, design it as you wish, without very little taxpayer money being involved. Also, I also like to address the elephant in the room, or should I say the ferret in the room? Regarding Odell Rogers, never had the privilege and honor of knowing the man, and I'm sure he's a good person, outstanding for the community of Indian Trail, but for someone to post a photograph of a memorial service at a graveside, and somehow twist it to have an ARP of funds to repair a roof for the VFW is out of line, especially for a veteran. And that should be addressed as such, especially when it's on a liked Todd Barber Facebook page, which to me is for campaign purposes, nothing else. That's all I have, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Dan Schellenkamp.
Mayor, council, Dan Schellenkamp, Rain Tree Drive here in Indian Trail. I once sat on the other side of the table there from 2005 to 2009, so I thank you for your time and your service to the town. I know it can take a lot of time to do it right, and a lot of effort. Couple things, number one, I'm a little older than I was in 2009, eyesight's going. Lots of nice new shiny roundabouts in Indian Trail. They need ample street lighting. My headlights are pointing this way, I think I'm near the curve, I'm making this hard turn, I can't see, it's raining, there's hardly any stripes visible. Please work with our DOT partners anytime and every time we build a roundabout, and we need to retrofit the existing ones. We need ample street lighting at every roundabout, so we can see what's going on there. I know you went into closed session about some properties, I looked at those property numbers, I hope you get good, good solid appraisals before anybody thinks about making any kind of offers. You would do the same if you were buying, buying your own properties. I'm a physical conservative, I know we got budget time coming up. I went through and I looked at the last 11 years' worth of revenues, broke them out by ad valorem versus sales tax. There were two recent, or there were two, also I should preface that with, there's a property tax reevaluation that the county's performing. I think they're performing it now, I'm not sure if it takes effect this year or next year. But I looked back just over the last 11 years, and you did two things to me that I'm really mad about. Now, some of you weren't council members at the time, but, but you still did it to me, okay? Because you are my council members. In 2013, it looks like there was a property tax reevaluation, because how else can I explain a 30% increase in ad valorem taxes in your audited 2013? A 30% increase in ad valorem taxes? I see again in 19, or I'm sorry, 19, in 2022, I believe there was another reevaluation, I see on the audited numbers for that year, a 35% increase in ad valorem taxes. Now, the tax rate stayed at 18.5, but it didn't really, because when the ad valorem goes up, the rate of 18.5 brings in a ton more money, and recently, it's 2022, that brought in 35% more money. That came from my pocket, that came from your pocket, that came from all the citizens' pockets. What I'm, what I'm asking for is, we got this reevaluation coming up, I'm looking for my council members, all of y'all, I'm looking for pledges of revenue neutral budget for the town of Indian Trail with regard to ad valorem taxes. So...
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
That brings us to John Early.
I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the people that work for the town of Indian Trail, to the staff for the railroad tracks being repaired. Thank God, I go over them railroad tracks a bunch of times every day, thank y'all for all your hard work and diligence. We know that it was actually y'all that got that done, and it wasn't, didn't have anything to do with people posting pictures with a rodent. Thank you.
Okay, has council got any comments? Any council comments? I would like, Jim, would you like to come up and talk a little bit, are you good? Because I would like for you to kind of answer maybe what Mr. Schellenkamp...
Yeah, in regard to the revenue neutral, we spent a lot of time on that. The last one was in fiscal year '22, we calculated it was a little bit less than 14 cents. But then, the one before that was the fiscal '15, and that actually, you could have raised taxes in Indian Trail, but conservatively, they kept the rate at 18 and a half. 18 and a half cents is, for the last 11 years, no tax increase in Indian Trail. We spent a lot of time on the revenue neutral. One of the things, and I recommended keeping it at 18 and a half, one of the things is that it also impacts motor vehicle and personal property, so they would get like a double benefit, because they go down every year based on depreciation. Your car goes down every year in value, times the 18 and a half cents, so if we lowered the revenue neutral, also affects that, they would be getting a double benefit. The next revale is 2026, is the schedule, and we'll keep a close eye on that. Again, I was a strong opponent, we get more sales tax based on the ad valorem tax levy going up, getting our fair share from Union County, I feel. For the first day I got here, I thought we weren't getting a fair share, we're getting more now. Any other questions on that?
Anybody? Thank you, appreciate you coming up. That brings us up to the law enforcement. Captain Hunky.
Thank you, guys. Mayor, council, I want to apologize for missing the budget meeting last week. I was marooned on a desert island. All I could do was drink fruity drinks and eat fresh seafood, and appreciate any care and concern y'all have for me for that. The, I've changed up the packet a little bit, I want to give you all kind of just a run through what we got. The front map shows two major things we have here in Indian Trail, and that's wrecks and larcenies, that just kind of gives you a little picture of what we've got. And I've also compared, instead of comparing it to last month's, I compared it to this time last year. This time, compared to this time last year, our response time has gone down 45 seconds, so we're getting there a little quicker. As it comes to wrecks, we have gone up 12% from this time last year, and our total crimes overall has gone up 14%. So as you guys think about our, our budget and our request for, for more officers to understand that, I wish we were in a position where we needed less officers, but unfortunately, this day in time, we're going to need more. So, you guys have any questions for me?
Yes, Dennis, just to comment, it looks like this year, people are in a much bigger hurry to get back from lunch, because there's 13 wrecks at 1 o'clock versus what was it, 10 last year? So, that's, that kind of stuck out, but...
Yeah, they're either getting back from lunch or going to lunch, one of the two.
That's right, yeah.
Thank you, guys.
Bring us to the consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
All in favor? Three votes for, all against? Okay, guys, what do you want to pull, let's pull off what you want to, let's talk about your, what, let's pull it off, the agenda. We'll approve the three items that we, that, right, and if you tell us which two you want to talk about, if you would, I would, which, which ones do you have a problem with?
Is that generally the procedure?
It isn't, it is.
I thought it was a prior to the meeting, we decided that?
Well, we, we've had a lot of comments that, that we should be doing it, pulling it off, and discussing it.
I support that, Mayor.
We can't support...
We're not, we're gonna, we're gonna put it somewhere else on the agenda.
Okay, we'll go ahead and move it, the seven and a half million dollars.
Okay, so we want to move, do, what do we want to move it to? Melody?
Oh, please, yes. E and F.
I'm, I didn't hear you. Under bud...
It's under budget amendment, it's under F.
Just F, not E?
I don't have any problem with E.
Okay, I would put it under new business, 10F budget amendments.
It'd be A under new business?
Oh, I'm sorry, it would be old business, it would be old business.
Old business.
All right, would that be A, did you say put it under new business?
Old business.
Put it under old business.
C?
Be C?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, both, are you both objecting to the same, same one? Todd, what do you?
I think you need a motion to move it.
Oh, I can make that motion.
Okay, let's get a motion.
Yeah.
Then you gotta have approval to move it.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, so, Mayor, just...
If there's no discussion, then it's a moot point.
Go ahead.
So, Mayor, just do, if, with your permission, if we can suspend the rules a little bit, and just to allow me to move that, that's okay with you, sir? To allow, is it okay with you that I, we suspend the rules and I can make a motion to move that item?
Sure, sure. Go ahead.
Is that legal to suspend the rules?
You can suspend the rules anytime, in a medium, however your rules or procedures state that if anyone wants an item removed from the consent agenda, it has to be removed.
Well, you know, from my understanding, that was supposed to be pre, you know, pre-meeting, that we'd have to bring that up prior to this situation, where we are now. Why would we do that in, in this way?
Let me just, sorry, let me just speak for one minute. We've, we've been here for the last few meetings, and the consent agenda usually is things that are routine. This is the third time that we've had council not vote, some of the council not vote on the consent agenda.
Right.
It is, in my opinion, my, my experience here, if you do not agree with something on the consent agenda, move it into the open meeting and discuss it, there is nothing wrong with that. But to just vote, not vote on it, I think really doesn't serve the public good.
Well, I mean, you know, why would I approve something that I was against before in the initial meeting that I disapproved?
Get on record and vote against it when it comes up.
I did, I did.
But you know, you get the agenda days before, you know, here, you could have mentioned it at that point, and put it on, and change it.
I met with the town manager about it today.
Okay, well, maybe we need to start doing that.
I have an opinion.
Okay. All right, so where are we, are we gonna?
I think that's, motion to suspend the rules to move under 7F budget amendments to old business, 9C budget amendments.
Budget amendment, okay. All in favor of that? Okay, unanimous. All right. So that brings us to public hearings. Come right up, Brandy.
Actually, yeah, let's...
I apologize, hold on one second.
Yeah, sorry. Let me make a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended, where we removed item 7F.
Thank you, Mark. Okay, all right, all in favor? Unanimous. Now, Brandy.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, just quickly want to, do you have the power, we know? Okay. Quickly address an issue that was spoke about during public comment during the last meeting, and this is just a municipal code change, so we are modifying the ordinance related to animals. Our town attorney just suggested a simple addition, so we just got one line there for MC 2023 0069. An electronic leash that lacks an actual connection to the dog does not meet the requirements of this section. So that's all this change is about, and we have the requested action before you. I'll be glad to answer any questions. I do want to thank our town clerk for being gracious, this was kind of a time crunch, so I appreciate her working with me for that.
Okay, any, any questions? Any questions? No questions? Okay, so, staff recommends what? Did you, what, did you just read it, the staff?
Just, just that one addition to the code, we didn't change anything else.
So you're recommending to, to be more specific, to not have a...
Correct, correct, and we, we talked with Captain Hunky about this, as well as our code enforcement officers really liked this addition to the code.
Okay, very good, very good. Okay, so there, there is nobody that signed up for a public hearing, so can we open and close public hearing? Can I get a motion to open, close hearing?
Get a motion to approve that.
We have to have the public hearing first.
Can I get a motion to...
Motion to open and close public hearing.
Open public comments, I'm sorry, open public comments?
Motion to open public, public comments.
Okay.
Motion to close...
All in favor? Unanimous? Okay, now...
Motion to close public comments.
All in favor? Okay, all right. So, you want to close the part of this public hearing, and council, do you want to deliberate on this at all? No? No? Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve MC 2023-0069 to amend Chapter 92 Code of Ordinances of Indian Trail Ordinance Number 27 as presented.
All in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brandy. Brings us to old business, project updates. Adam?
So we are going to do what we've been doing at the last several meetings, we are going to have our last organization that surplus funds were used for come and give you all a very quick update on those funds. Here is the Lions Club.
Thank you. My name is Wayne Courtney, I am president of Indian Trail Lions Club. Mr. Mayor, council, I better put my glasses on so I can see. Thank you for the invitation to speak with you tonight, and update the council on activities at the club, and show appreciation for the new vision screening system that the town has purchased the club with grant money. This, along with our existing screening camera system, will allow us to screen twice as fast even in two different locations. I do regret to inform you that the mobile screening unit will not be available for the 2023 Family Fun Day because of scheduling conflict. But members, oh, jumped the line. But with this being said, please do not hesitate to reach out to the Lions Club at the Family Fun Day, because the Lions members will be in attendance, and will be there to address any needs of the community. We are not able to do the vision screening with the camera that was purchased by the town, because it requires very low light to work properly. I've been working with the state vision coordinator to come up with a solution to screen in outside situations, but haven't come up with any plausible resolution at this time. Just because the vision van will not be at there, don't mean that you will not be able to get an eye exam. Please reach out to our members, and we will be able to make other arrangements. If you're not familiar with the Lions Club, our services do include, but not limited to, vision, hearing, childhood diabetes, childhood cancer, and hunger. I would like to encourage any male or female that is interested in the activities and services of the club, to please reach out and join us at a meeting on the second and fourth Monday of each month here at the town hall at 7 o'clock, or contact myself or any club member. In the past, our services have included vision screenings for the community, collection of donated recyclable eyeglasses, purchase of glasses for needy, support of local families that have, have had devastating tragedies in their life, support Camp Dogwood, sponsoring visually impaired persons to attend Camp Dogwood for a week, sponsor visually impaired persons to attend North Carolina Lions Fishing Tournament, which is held at the coast every year. Every lion club member not only volunteers their time, but we also pay quarterly dues. This is the only drawback to being a lion. There are no honorary positions, and there are no free rides. If you're not paying dues and serving your community, you are not a lion. Our dues are not only money, excuse me, our dues are the only money that is not under direct control of the local lions. All donations that are collected in the community stay in the community, or at least stay within the control of the local club to spend as we see fit. Yes, we send money to the Lions International to be spent on disaster relief, flood, earthquakes, tornadoes, hurricanes, wildfires, et cetera. Every dollar that is spent, sent to Lions International, 84 cents of it goes directly to a cause. Only 16 cents of that dollar will go to administration costs. In the past, the town council has been very supportive of the club, and at least, but last spring, we received an email from a councilman, just to note, the seemingly questionable actions and affiliations that are being spoke about was a support for a different political candidate. And I quote, "I have heard from fellow council members and the mayor, discussion will begin Monday with the town manager regarding the parade given seemingly questionable actions and affiliations of a current president. However, if the club wishes to address the issue, it is up to the club. But whatever action the club does or does not take, I would suggest that someone else, than the club president, reach out to the town manager after Monday's meeting. It would be no problem for the town to find another host that would love to do the parade or have wrecks and Parks and Recreation handle it." My question is, does the town council still feel this way towards the club? It looks as, if you are looked at the fundraising that is already, the funding that has already been allocated, the answer is apparently yes. This is the monies that has already been moved from one account into another account and replaced with ARP of funds. Don't see that ARP of fund requirements really apply anymore. We have great support from the community. If the club has the support of the council, we will be able to achieve so much more for this great community that we all know and love. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Wayne. Anybody have any questions for? No?
I'd just like to make, make a comment. I don't think Wayne knows this, but he's being moved up in the Lions organization to the state level. He's a, going to be in the state leadership role, and I believe it's going to be for cancer for children, yeah, so congratulations to Wayne.
Yes, I knew that, but I wasn't aware that you knew that.
Okay. Okay.
Congratulations. Adam, come on up.
All right. So, uh, just a couple of quick things. We'll, um, highlight one thing that we talked about at the budget retreat. We talked about two options for ARPA funds and surplus funds going forward. So over the next several meetings, the next budget meeting, we'll need to make decisions on which direction we want to go with those. Just keep that in the back of your mind. I don't want that to get lost. As we move down to town funds or those surplus funds, uh, had a conversation with Union County about the water lines, actually yesterday. They are in the process of switching from using ARPA funds for their water lines to now using basically general service dollars for their portion of the project. Reason being, all the requirements that are, you know, there when we're using ARPA funds, they find it to be easier if they don't use them for that amount of money. We do have one other thing I would like to get head nods from y'all of tonight if we can. The Lions Club with the original ask that they had of, I believe, eleven thousand dollars, we did not spend all of those funds on the camera and the laptop. Coming out of that, um, they've had an additional request for canopies for when they're at events like Family Fun Day would be one of those events or any other thing that they're doing in the, the community. These would be ten by ten tents that would have their logo and different things on them. Just would like to get head nods that we can go ahead and move forward with that so that it, um, falls under that. All right? Thank y'all.
Head nod.
Head nod, I see. All right, that's all I got unless you all got questions for me.
Thank you for your hard work.
Thank you.
Mr. Hunsinger.
Mayor, council, uh, just going to give you an update on the First Avenue project. Contractor right now is working on the north side of the roadway, uh, replacing driveway pipes this week, and, uh, is shooting for getting a concrete crew out there to start replacing those driveways where the pipes have been replaced. And then, um, I've got a, got a feedback from Verizon. They should be out there tomorrow fixing their screw up, and, um, hopefully that'll get resolved, uh, like the date I said in the email, uh, once they, uh, they've got to transfer over the, the power to the fiber optic on April 4th. So once that's done, hopefully they're out of the way and we can move forward with the rest of the project. Just want to make you aware again, in case you get phone calls, that contractor has any right any day not to show up to that project because he has till June to get the project done. So it could be nine degrees outside, uh, sunny day, and if he's not out there, that's his right, and then we can't force him to be out there. So you may get a phone call here and there because they may have to go somewhere to do something else, but again, we can't control the schedule. They have a time period to get it done. They don't get to ask for that time back. Only time they get to ask back if it rains, and it has to be a certain amount of rain days, so they don't even get that sometimes. So again, if you get phone calls and people not out there, please understand and tell them that, look, that they have a contract time they're obligated to, which is in June, and so town cannot control that. Any questions about the project?
I got a, can I ask-
Yeah.
Ask a question about another project that a business owner asked me about, and that's the-
Yes, sir.
I guess it's phase one of the, um, uh, the downtown street project.
Yes.
And that's what, from Matthews, uh, Indian Trail Matthews Road up to Gribble or which-
No, from Gribble to Liberty Lane, which is this road right past the sanctuary.
So right there at the roundabout and that whole area there in front of the pharmacy. What's, what's the timetable?
Uh, we've got all our submittals in as far as our final, uh, right-of-way design plans and our right-of-way estimate to DOT. So I'm hoping to get a response back to them in a month of April, and then we'll go into right-of-way immediately afterwards.
Okay, then after right-of-way, then-
Then right-of-way, we'll go straight to construction.
Straight to construction.
Yes.
So April? Okay. Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Thank you, Todd.
All right.
Okay, that brings us back to the consent agenda and the budget amendment. Um, I, I just want to say real quick that, um, that we, you know, guys, we do this for transparency. You know, we, we keep voting, voting, or we have votes over the years for the consent agenda. Generally, everyone sees the consent agenda, knows about it, and can bring up their concerns. And I'm not saying you have, if you have concerns, by all means, bring it up, but several times we voted on it and, uh, and it's not passed, I mean, it's passed, but it's passed three to two, four to one, whatever. And I think the, the public has a right to know what's being pulled off instead of just passing on by and, uh, you know, not discussing it. So that, that's, that's why we're at where we're at today. And this is first time in eleven years that I've been here that we've done it because I have not seen that done in eleven years. So I apologize for being, uh, a little awkward with it because, uh, I really didn't know, really didn't know what to do with it. So, uh, I'm assuming, um, Ms. Cox, that, that we asked them what it is that they want to pull off or what, why or what, or how do we go about this?
This is just time for discussion. If anyone wants to have a discussion, they don't have to. You can just vote on that one individual item if no one wants to discuss it.
Okay, all right. Well, that's, that's good. So do you guys want to discuss why you pulled it off?
I can explain myself.
Okay.
Yeah, um, you know, since the beginning of, uh, this field, it's supposed to be a park, um, it's been talked about a soccer field. We went out and had someone design a soccer field. It came back, there was two options. There was a five million dollar one and a seven and a half million dollar one. I voted against it, and these consent agendas say they're just sliding that seven fifty, seven point five million through the consent agenda, and I don't approve it because I didn't approve it initially. Why would I approve it through a consent agenda? And I just think it's backhand that you guys brought this out like this. You know, I, I don't, I don't agree with it. Why would I vote for something I don't agree with? I have that right. And I'm, I think it's physically irresponsible. I know the, the majority of the public don't agree with it, so that's my point. So if it's on a consent agenda and I don't agree with it, I'm going to vote no. I'm sorry you've never seen it in eleven years, but here's a new, new error. A new error. Thank you.
Hold on. That's Dennis.
I keep hearing seven and a half million. First of all, I don't think it was seven and a half million. And then the reason that it was at that point, first of all, it was supported by, uh, all the council when it was around five million. We looked at moving, uh, the, uh, well, actually leaving the detention pond where it was and putting a structure over it because we thought that rather go out and buy a new, uh, raw green field park that, uh, adding the field there for that little bit more money, which in the scheme of thing for a new park, uh, is not that much more money. So we were trying to do the most conservative thing. But I think from what I've been told, it's not feasible now to put that structure over the, uh, the detention pond is maybe to do something that will be much less expensive. But it keeps being told is a seven point five million dollar project. And tell me if that's, am I not correct?
Let me, um, interject real quick, but if you-
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
Can I ask a question to the town?
Mike answer that question.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought he was just making a comment.
What was your question again?
Okay, uh, we're not going to do the, the structure over the detention pond, which was going to be a lot more expensive than what we thought. So that's going to reduce, I think, first of all, I thought it was like seven point one million and not seven point five, but that's going to reduce that project down quite a bit. Isn't it cost?
The capital project ordinance was budgeted at seven point five, and it came from several different funding sources that we talked about.
Okay.
We initially looked at covering the pond. That appears not to be feasible, which means that the price should be lower. We are waiting to get a confirmed price, and once we do, we send it back to the council, you know, for, just to review it with y'all. Also, I think Commissioner McIntyre has his hand raised, and I have a comment that might be helpful to, for this item.
Well, I just wanted to go on-
Let, let the manager finish, and I'll ask my question.
Go ahead. I want to go on record that seven point five should not be spread across town because that's not the correct figure now.
But it's on the consent agenda.
All right, guys, here, we're not, we're not here to talk about this, I don't mean the seven point five or whatever.
It's on there.
We're, we're talking about the budget amendment. Go, go ahead and finish.
The, the document that you've pulled is actually a series of different budget amendments that Jim Waterwitz is available to come and explain. We met with, uh, council member Ambergy a little while ago and talked through those various items. So if it's the desire of the council, Jim can come up and walk you through each and every item of that.
Before Jim comes, may I speak, Mr. Mayor, sir?
Right here.
All right, thank you. Um, I've been here for five years plus. One of the things that I got when I came here was a book called, um, Robert's Rules of Order. If you're going to sit upon this council dais right here, you need to learn the rules. And clearly, the rules, how we operate, is, apparently, my colleague here does not understand them. So that's one. Two, this item that we're talking about, we're vote, we're talking about people voting against, um, funds for cleaning contract, against, um, allocating funds for the right of way, all right? Against cleanup of the budget impacted amounts, allocation for merit and other things. You pull the item if you do not like it, if you vote, if you want to vote against it, you want to show your displeasure, you put the other council members on record. You come, we, we come here and it's, it's a continuous thing. When you vote against one item, there's seven other amendments in there that have nothing to do with that, that we should look at. The second thing is, I know for a fact through conversations with the persons who are voting against this, they were in favor of this. So all of a sudden, now it's elections, it's a reelection year, it's election season, and we come up, we come up with this silly nonsense. I spent a lot of time and energy into this. I generally do not talk about things or other people when I sit up here, but being honest with you, it's frustrating because we're looking like idiots here where we don't know what we're doing. We need to learn the rules, come here prepared, do the legwork, and if we disagree with something, pull it from the consent agenda, let's discuss it, put the other council members on record, let them vote for or against it, and then we move on. But this thing, thing, talking to the staff about they're hiding or trying to slip it under, it's on the consent agenda, it's been discussed already. When it comes back, it's not for discussion again, it's for approval. If you disapprove, move it off. That's all that happens.
Your board up there. Todd, go ahead.
Robert's rule is, if you have a motion, you can vote yes or no. Correct? Hmm, is Robert's rule. So if you have a motion to vote yes or no on the consent agenda, then you have the right to vote yes or no. That's Robert's rule. You know, as far as the seven and a half million is, I voted against moving forward with the project, and so I'm not voting to budget the project. And it's really just that simple in, in where I stand. So if we want to move forward with the motion, I'm good. Thank you, Mayor.
Any more?
One more, one more comment. Um, honestly, I don't know everything. You know, I come in here blind, never ran for office in my life. I ran in here for corruption, I ran for corruption in the politics. I don't, I'm not up for election. I just believe it's frivolous to speak another word that people have said about other items. However, it's irresponsible to send seven and a half million dollars for a field.
All right, I'm, I'm on point. I'm going to order. I, I saw we should build parking, you know? That's it, I don't want to hear that. It's already been approved.
Yeah, that's fine.
You've already, let's, let's, let's move on.
And I disapprove of it still.
You made your point.
Thank you.
All right, here's, here's my question to you. Many years ago, uh, I, I, me personally, and, and, uh, was, and I was wrong, I think I was wrong, I was, I was against putting up for a new town hall without a, without a vote for it, without the people coming up for the vote. But council passed it anyway, okay? So there were many things just like this that I had to vote for on that particular or on the, the consent agenda and other things. Well, at the point, after, after the point that I, that my, that I've lost, that what I feel, uh, didn't, didn't work out, I still voted for many things for the town hall. I wanted to have the best of everything. Now, my point being is, we're not voting on the seven, that's not the vote anymore. The vote, the vote is not for the, for the parks anymore. The, the, the vote, we've already voted on the parks. I'm all right or wrong.
Yeah, funded.
It's funded, it's done, so, you know, we, so, so this is actually not what, what we should be doing. And just, I'll get your comments on this.
The, the budget amendment is just a tech, technical procedure that Mr. Waterwitz puts on. Sometimes it's a couple months after the item's actually been on the agenda and the items have been discussed. It's just the document, and he can explain better than I can, that transfers the funds from one fund to another fund for that project.
Mr. Waterwitz, if you'd come up here for just maybe two minutes and explain, and maybe this will help, uh, all of us.
Yeah, the attorney's absolutely correct. This project was funded when you passed the ordinance. Basically, what we did, we put this on a couple meetings before, just for transparency purposes, doesn't even have to be on there, it's already been passed. We could go right to the system, that budget ordinance is the budget. We have two, construction and design, and five funds for revenue. They all balance at seven point five million, and that passed. So once that passed, what we do now is just for transparency purposes, we bring it back. Doesn't have to be, but we just do it for, I think it's a good thing to put it before the council, and if it brings up debate, but it's already been passed. The budget is in place.
What I'm trying to talk about, Jim, is try to avoid this in the future. And, uh, being on it is passed already, th, this is kind of a mute point.
I'm all for it. I'm all for, I could maybe a better system, yeah.
Right, so-
Yeah, need a better system.
With that being said, and, and, and it also, and, and I disagree with some of what everybody says, but, but don't, you can't get up here and say the majority of the people unless you've talked to, uh, over twenty thousand people that say they want it or they didn't want it.
Maybe we should put it out to the people then, you know, next time, something big like that.
Well, that's, that's, that's what we're up here for, is to make those.
That's what I'm saying, we need to talk about that.
Jim, thank you very much. So let, so, uh, Ms. Cox, so we need to vote on this particular, uh, get a motion for, for, uh, budget amendment F?
Yes, sir.
I'll, I'll make that motion, sir.
Okay.
I'll make a motion for item nine F, the budget amendments.
I think it's seven F. No, you're right, nine F.
Nine F.
I apologize.
Budget amendments that was prepared by Mr. Waterwitz.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, all right. We got Mr. McIntyre, Mr. Gay, Mr. Hollick in favor and against? Okay, we got Tom and Todd against. Okay, so we got it. And let's do this in the future. We're going to pull it off, and we're going to discuss it. I think it's the only way we should do it, so. Okay, uh, brings us to, we don't have any new business, so it brings, uh, brings us to, uh, discussion items. And, uh, I wanted to put this on the, uh, on the, uh, agenda tonight because I spoke with Representative Dean Arp yesterday, and, uh, there's been talk amongst all council is, uh, about a senior center. And I know, I appreciate all you showing up tonight. A, a senior center for, uh, for our seniors slash community center. And we've talked a lot about it, we've looked at different projects, we've looked at different land around town. And, um, uh, in speaking with, with Mr. Arp last night, uh, he informed me that in this budget, uh, that he thought, and he thought the chances were very good that we could get us possibly a couple of million dollars done, uh, by the state to bring in to fund part of it. Not to buy the land, but, but if we had the land, that they could do some infrastructure. Couldn't guarantee it a hundred percent, but he thought, he felt very strongly, uh, that, that we could get a couple of million dollars. He asked, uh, that I write a letter, uh, to him or to, to, uh, to Mr. Arp, and asking for those funds. Didn't want to do that without first bringing it up to council, letting the council know what, and, and the reason it came up so quickly is I just spoke with him last night about it. So, uh, I had, uh, had talked to several people, uh, around town about it. I know we had talked about it. So I guess, uh, first of all, is there any comment on that? Does anybody want to, yeah, Mr. McIntyre?
Yeah, sir, I, I support that fully. I think, um, it would be a good place for our senior citizens to gather, um, during other, um, you know, during the day or other times so that they can have events meet. I know that there's a, we have some serious mahjong players in town, so it'd be a good place for them to come, but I, I fully support that, sir.
Anybody else? Todd?
No, I, you know, I'm, I'm with you. Well, if the state reps can get us something, then yeah, I think, yeah, we, we pursue that, so I think it's a great idea.
Okay, very good. Well, uh, can I get a head, head this way or this way?
Head nod.
Very good, very good. Well, that, that's very pleasant to know and pleasing to know and, and, and no guarantees, but hey, we're going to work on this, and hopefully we can, we can do this. I, 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 just, me personally, I'd like to see a senior center slash, uh, center for, for all the people, but especially for the senior citizens, uh, because, uh, concluding the people, but especially for the senior citizens, because concluding myself as being a senior citizen, we need, we need to spend some, some tax money for ourselves while we're still here, if, if you know what I mean. So anyway, it's good news and, and council, thank you very much. I'll, I'll put the letter together and, and we'll, we'll go from there.
Mr. Mayor, if we might, let's get the council to have a motion and a vote and the affirmative to authorize you to write the letter on behalf of the town requesting that funding.
I'll make that motion, sir.
Okay.
I make a motion to authorize the mayor to write a letter on behalf of the town council and the town residents requesting funds from the general legislature of North Carolina, seeking funds for a senior center slash community center in Indian Trail.
Okay, thank you, Marcus. All in favor? Unanimous. Very good. Thank you. All right, moving right along. Bring this to managers update.
Every two weeks, we put out a manager's report, comes out on Friday, hopefully you're looking at that, because that gives you about all the information that I'm getting ready to tell you now. I am making daily visits to First Avenue. I've become a new resident out there to check on the progress. And Mr. Hunsinger's right, they were not out there Monday because of how muddy it was. We got an inch of rain and there's a bad drainage problem, and so we're working to get that resolved. Indian Trail Road Phase One, you see that in your agenda package, we're continuing to work with the other utility companies on the underground utilities for Phase One. Dennis, I gave you the wrong location for Phase One, I was one or two blocks off, I apologize for that. Phase Two, again, a complete street rebuild. We have received the preliminary survey stuff and the consultant's working on a layout. So what we have is we don't have the total cost of that. Once they do the layout, once they do the estimate, then we'll bring that back to you. Pedestrian update plan, you should have in front of you a little card, plus we have some cards right out there called Move It. And so we're updating our pedestrian plan, it's the first time we've done it since 2009. I hope everyone participates. You heard at the budget workshop the other night that we have 13,000 feet of sidewalk that we have put in pre-planning, but we haven't made, we haven't had any direction on moving forward on some of those sidewalks. And what you're gonna find, and I'll send you out an article from Business North Carolina, 2023 is the year of the trails. And there's an article from Rutherfordton about how they built greenways and trails and how that spurred economic development. You also have a ledger-sized piece of paper, you actually have two pieces of paper, one is a monthly financial dashboard that Jim puts together. When you look at that, it can be extremely complex and confusing. If you have any questions, you know, let us know. And you also have the spreadsheet that has all the projects on it. We're in the process of updating that and we'll probably make it a little bit simpler for, for you to keep track of those projects. Are there any questions? Okay, assuming there is none, I'll move into upcoming items. Tax report next time, we'll have an ARPA update. We've got two public hearings on Terranova and Chapman. And also, Mayor Pro Tem Barber brought up an issue with speeding on Park Road. I think I was out there Friday before Mr. Rogers funeral. I went out there and I noticed they had taken the speed control off.
It's back out there.
Has he put it back out there? I didn't see it Friday, so.
It was there this morning.
Was it? Okay, well, I must've missed it on Friday, but-
Yeah, I think, unless I'm seeing things.
I don't know. But anyway, we'll give you the results of that and what people are doing and then let y'all go back and revisit whether you wanna split, whether it meets the qualification for traffic calming devices. And that's all I've got, Mayor and Council.
Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. That brings us up to council comments.
Councilmember Gay.
One thing I'd like to touch on is it's important for a governing body to have consistency and credibility. And so if we put in for a, if we vote to put in for a grant and other towns wanted that grant, but we get it from, from Carpo, I voted against the charging stations, but, you know, we chart, we, we put in for the grant, we get it where other towns don't get it. It was voted by everybody but myself, but then they, we turn around and council member or two said, well, we decided we don't want it. That's just not good business. We're not a flip-flop council. We need to be concise in what we do, we need to show dependability to people that we put these out to. We voted against streetlights, I own 74, I voted against the streetlights. Then some of the folks who voted against the streetlights have now decided they'd like streetlights. So what kind of credibility do you have when you flip-flop back and forth like that? So we need to be, we need to be credible, we need to stay with our decisions unless we find out there's fraud involved. We need, instead of going out and telling people it's a 7.5 million dollar park addition when it's not a 7.5, you know, you gotta be educated before you make statements so that you don't give people the wrong idea that detention pond is not gonna be covered. So that 7.5 figure is a false figure. So for us to be credible, I think we need to have all of our facts together and we need to make decisions and stay with them. And I hope everybody has a nice evening and be careful going home.
Councilmember McIntyre.
Thank you. I think I've said a lot tonight, more than I wanted to, but a few things. Trina, thank you very much for your work, I really do appreciate that. Mr. Manager, sir, one of the things that I got when I joined the council was the Robert's Rules of Order. If my fellow council members do not have it, I highly recommend that the town procures it for them and distributes. I think it tells a really good, gives you, it really basically helps you understand how a meeting is run, the do's and don'ts, and therefore we can function in a more orderly manner. Lot of civic organizations within the town do a lot of good work. I wanna recognize the Lions Club. The reason is Lions Club, the vision, stuff that you guys do going out to the schools helping, I, I really do appreciate that. And I know y'all don't come and ask for anything much from the town, but the work that you do, we do appreciate it, you know, seeing you at the parade, helping out and so on. So thanks for all the work that you do. I know it's volunteers getting together, doing that, you know, a lot of your time goes through it, but to you and all the other civic organizations, thank you for the work that you do. In discussion tonight, it was brought up about maybe putting some things out for vote. I personally believe that if you wanna put something out for a vote, you more than likely should, you bring it up and you vote on it. However, you cannot be selective. You can't decide that it's okay to spend 4.3 million dollars on fire trucks without a vote. I support the fire trucks. I also support expanding the parks here. And the reason I support it is because quite a few years ago, when the park bonds were issued, right? The very first time I met anybody in town running for office was Mayor Coney. Came to my yard and I gave him the business. You know, after he left, he was wondering, who's that guy? But the thing is, I ended up talking to him and he kept his word. He talked about the vision that he had for the town, the parks and all these things. And when the bonds came up, I voted for the parks. I voted to support it. We, we are left with about $2 million in park bonds that cannot be spent anywhere else in town, with the exception of Chestnut Park or Crooked Creek Park. And at Crooked Creek, we know we can't build anything because the majority of the remaining land there is in a flood plain. It takes about $1 million to $1.5 million just to get one acre of land available for use. So what do we do? We have to use what's available to us to expand the park with the, with the intention of building the football field actually reduced our available park for other things that go on. And we see when we have the Thursday, the what, the Thursday hits, what's it, hits at six, we see the people coming out there, we see the use. If you talk to the parks and recs, we know what's going on. When the young, when the young families are crossing the street to go over to that second park, we see them be, um, crossing from Carolina Courts Parking Lot. So that adds a lot of parking because we know we need parking there. So that's the reason why I support these things. I support them because people before voted to approve them and I'm gonna continue the work. Staff, thank you very much for all that you do. I do apologize if I offended anybody tonight, I try not to, try to be, but try to be as polite and civil as possible, but I want us to just really do, do things and do them the right way. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem Barber.
Yeah, I'd like to thank the Lions Club coming in and all the work they do. I was president for two or three years and I know the machine that we're buying really helps. It's, kids can't tell you what's wrong with their eyes, so when they're young, you can use that screener and it'll tell if a kid has lazy eye and different things like that. And it's really a big preventive tool. We started that program when I was president of the Lions Club. And I seem like I made a comment when Carolina Salsa Brooks came in here and challenged the council about volunteering and I mentioned something about life membership. In 2012, I was awarded the North Carolina Lions Incorporated Life Membership. What's that say?
Carolina has said life membership.
Thank you. You can still get one. It's in the member section of the Lions Club, you can go there and you can pay $200. I looked it up. So John Hemby got one, I think everybody in the club in 2012 got one. The other honorary award I was given was the Jack Stickley Award. So, you know, so that's, you know, I don't know if they still do Jack Stickley or not in North Carolina, but that's two North Carolina Lions awards. The, but the other thing I have is also is appreciate you mentioning the two, Odell Rogers and Wayne Smith. Odell was a grand marshal also. Also, we had another person pass away here, long-term resident, give a shout out to her family, Betty Alton passed away, wonderful woman and all that. I wanna give a shout out to Safer Communities Ministry. They held a banquet fundraiser there. I know Mr. Waterwitz there, Ambergy, Mr. Salsa Brooks was there, and it's just a wonderful Wesley Kaziah, Darrell Oliver, Sheriff Kathy gave excellent presentations and things on it. I recommend if you're looking to volunteer or help, they work together with the sheriff's office, Ground 40, Cameron's House of Hope, which I know we helped Cameron House of Hope. So wonderful organizations, if you wanna get involved, they're there. Indian Trail United Methodist Church is having a craft and bake sale this Saturday. Also, Valley Church is having a festival and, and some Easter celebrations along, maybe you can go to the town and then go over there. Also, I wanna give a big shout out to a lot of the residents here who've reached out informing us about potholes. And the staff has been great and, you know, looking into where North Carolina might be repaving a road. William Rogers, Martha Hemby, Jenny Aldridge, Randy Piedit for First Avenue, Robin Golebisch, Linda Callahan, Kim Rogers, Millie Mumpower, Deborah Rhodes. You know, we depend on citizens to let us know what's going on in town. And when we have an issue, these people have been reaching out. Mike McLaren has been wonderful on passing on this information and I really appreciate the staff and the town manager and everyone taking these citizens' concerns legit and, and really looking into them and not considering the citizens to be making frivolous complaints in town. It is really making a difference and we've had a, you know, been a real positive impact on social media. People know that the town's working for the good of the people and it's, you know, whether it's been the dress and the speakers, thank you for doing that and everything. So I wanna wish everybody happy Easter. He has risen and that's what I believe. And, and I really hope everybody has a wonderful spring now that it's spring. Thank you very much.
Councilmember B. Hollick.
Right, it's hard to follow all of them. I just wanna thank everyone for coming out, really and truly, your opinions do matter. So continue to come in, continue to email us, continue to talk to us. Thank you, staff, y'all always do an amazing job and everyone have a safe evening.
Councilmember Ambergy.
I just wanna tell everybody happy Easter, Jesus loves you. And, you know, I might not always agree with what everybody says up here, but I think I made my point. God bless y'all, have a great evening.
Mayor Com.
I hear, I heard, I thought you weren't gonna say anything, but anyway, thank y'all for coming. And Trina, you're doing a fabulous job. This is, you're about a month on the job and you're doing a wonderful job. Keep it up. Brandy, thank you for helping me this week. Just, I like to go through, I talked to Brandy a couple of times about it, a gentleman who had some problems and, man, you were quick, called you at four o'clock in the afternoon and by five o'clock, he had already been contacted and you, you guys are, you're the best, what you do, thank you. Wayne, thank you for coming today, thanks for all the, the wonderful things that the Lion Club does. You guys are, are great. Just like, I think, maybe it was Marcus or Dennis or whoever commented that you guys, you guys aren't paid for what you do, you do it for the goodness of your heart and you do a lot of good things, along with several other clubs, but I just wanted to thank you from the bottom of my heart, what, what you guys do. And you guys sitting in the back, back there, thank you for coming tonight, all of you. I always love to see your faces and I am excited, hopefully that we can look into, get to work on a senior center or a senior slash community center for the town. Our town is a beautiful town and it'd only make it more beautiful and keep you guys out of trouble is really what we're trying to do. Get you off the street and, 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 no. I said try to get you, Richard, I didn't say we would get you out of trouble. But anyway, thank you for, for, for being who you are and I'm, I'm one of you, so let's, let's, let's do it. But with that being said, again, thanks everybody for coming. All the lease law, you know, you can get things accomplished if you come in here and you talk about it. And it, it makes me feel good. Council, you know, that tonight probably we had the liveliest meeting we've probably had in a long time, but we're gonna walk out of here and, and still all do, do what's right for the town and, or at least what we think's right for the town. So with that being said, have a great Easter and God bless everybody in here. And can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor? Unanimous.